Good morning Birmingham. Today is March 29th. It's little after 9:30. A call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We'll have invocation, and I have not asked before, but if Councilor Moore, would you be able to lead us in the invocation? And we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you all please stand, thank you.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Father God, we just come before you this morning, just thanking you for this amazing day, this great opportunity to come together in your name, Father God, to make decisions that will better improve our quality of life here in Birmingham. We thank you for each and every person that adds value to this city, each city employee, each of our city councils, Father God, the mayor, his team, and each of the citizens here. We ask that you continue to bless us, continue to watch over us, continue to keep us, help us to understand the importance of our words and how our words are very powerful. They can either tear down or create, Father God, and I thank you that. Each and every person in this city uses their words to create, to create a more equitable and beautiful place for us to live and to grow and to be edified. And we just praise your holy name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning.
Would you call the roll for us, please?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Council pro temusman.
Good morning.
Morning, Council President Allison.
Good morning, thank you very much. The minutes are not ready for November 9th, 2021 through March 22nd, 2022. Now we'll have communications from the mayor. Good morning, this mayor, good morning.
Good morning, Madam President, and good morning to the entire council. Your colleague didn't tell me today was her birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, happy birthday. Madam President and council, I actually only have one note to give today, and that is 100 days. We are 100 days out from the World Games, and we're excited about that. In just 100 days, the world will be at our front door. I think that's something to get excited about and something to acknowledge. The city, our city, that was once infamous for racial disharmony, will now be a great beacon for people of all cultures, breeds, and countries around the entire world. Eleven edition of the World Games will be held in our city on July 7th through the 17th. I think you all know the stats. More than 3,600 athletes from over 30 sports and 100-plus countries from 100-plus countries will take part in the games. I'm honored to be among the Birminghamians as well as with the city council greeting these champions, fans, and visitors to our great city. And an event of this magnitude, this part I want to stress, does not happen in a silo. It's a collaborative effort between many entities and dynamic talented individuals. One of those main drivers, I mean, at this time I want to come up, is Nick Sellers. Nick Sellers is the CEO of the World Games 2022. And it's been a pleasure working with Nick and his entire team, well, some of his team members that are present. Seeing his vision for this event comes to view. And I'm pleased to bring him up along at this time with, I think they're in the hallway, so y'all make some type of grand entrance for them. Y'all give it up for Vulcan and Vespa as we commemorate this special day. So, Madam President, I am going to do a couple of things. One, I'm gonna present a proclamation, and then I'm gonna pass the mic to our CEO here. And then at some point, I'm not sure what your rules have to be, but the four of us are gonna come up and take a picture with y'all if you're okay with that, Madam President. And so this proclamation and our significant countdown of 100 days reads: "Whereas the city of Birmingham, Alabama, is built on history and driven by innovation and has been the birthplace and home of many human and civil rights movements as well as champions in education, medicine, technology, and sports. And whereas in the early 1900s Birmingham was the epic center of industry in the southern United States and was home to booming iron and steel productions, the city's rapid growth earned it the nickname the Magic City. These roots are evident in landmarks such as Slough's Furnace, National Historic Landmark, and Vulcan Parking Museum, the home of the Vulcan statue that inspired the World Games 2022 mascot. And whereas the World Games is an extraordinary international sports event held every four years in the year following each Summer Olympic Games. Staged over 11 days, the Games represents the pinnacle of competition with 3,600 of the world's best athletes in 34 unique multidisciplinary sports. Whereas the World Games 2022 Birmingham is an international sporting event that will bring thousands of athletes as well as countless tourists and media to the Birmingham metro area. An increase in tourist seeking entertainment including... several things, and I'll skip that part. And whereas more than 600 medals will be awarded to the competing athletes including 200 gold medals for the ultimate champions in each discipline. And whereas the World Games 2022 will be held in Birmingham, Alabama from July 7th through the 17th of 2022, marking the World Games 40th anniversary, this will be the first edition of the event to be hosted in the United States since the inaugural World Games in Santa Clara, California in 1981. Now therefore I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim this proclamation in celebration of 100 days away from the World Games in Birmingham, Alabama, and I encourage all residents to salute this moment and to join the city and the game organizers by signing up to volunteer and also making plans to cheer on these champions so that the world can see what makes this a very special place. Thank you." Madam President, before we come up, if you don't mind, I'll pass the mic to our CEO of the World Games.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Sellers.
Morning, good morning, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you today, to first just say thank you. Each one of you with this mayor and his administration continue to lead and work so hard to ensure that your communities, your neighborhoods, are prepared for this historic moment in July. And today is a big day. It's a big day for our city, for our state, for our nation. Not just because we celebrate the birth of Councilor Clark, by the way, happy birthday, but because this year we share that day with her as it is the 100-day-out mark, an official countdown for World Games 2022. And it's a beautiful thing, really, to see this group of leaders and so many in this here that are in the communities that have labored in the vineyards for so many years come together, and now all of these other cities around us recognize that this is an important moment for Birmingham, Alabama, to finally take its rightful place among other southeastern cities as a true international destination. And the World Games, we believe, will do that. We have a very special announcement for this day, and I'd like to bring up a board member, our chief marketing officer from Coca-Cola United, a great lady and leader herself to announce this important announcement that will bring our country together even closer with us as we work 100 days from today for the World Games. Y'all, please join me in welcoming our chief marketing officer, Pam Cook. And also, we have for you, I apologize, to be on display until the World Games, we have for you the gold, silver, and bronze medals for City Hall that we will remain on display until our games begin. As the mayor said, now with over 108 countries, a record number of countries of athletes and teams that will be participating and competing in these games, a record for the World Games, they'll have their moment to step up on that medal platform, hopefully to achieve their moment of glory, and our city and state will share in that moment of glory with them because this is our medal moment too. Pam Cook.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. Happy birthday. To mark this special milestone today, the World Games 2022 is announcing a partnership with Airbus and Team Red, White, and Blue to create the Team Red, White, and Blue Old Glory Relay to the World Games 2022 presented by Airbus. On May 25th, an American flag will fly over the U.S. Capitol, and that flag will be lowered from atop the beautiful Capitol dome. And then, with the help of Alabama's congressional delegation, that flag will be handed to the first of thousands of our nation's military veterans. These brave veterans will carry this same flag, one after another, on a 3,000-mile epic journey from Washington, D.C. through our nation's heartland and across the great state of Alabama. And on July 7th, just moments before the national anthem is performed at the opening ceremony, American military veteran and inspirational leader Noah Galloway, along with Mayor Woodfin, will carry that same American flag alongside the World Games 2022 flag into Protective Stadium to officially start the first major international sporting event in the world with full venues again. Mr. Noah Galloway. It is my esteemed privilege to ask Mr. Galloway, who is an honorary co-chair of the 2022 World Games and our mascots Vulcan and Vespa, who are here today as well, to present it by Birmingham's own O'Neill Steel to join us here with the very same American flag that will soon fly over our nation's Capitol and to bring Mayor Woodfin and the World Games 22 flag into the stadium. Thank you so much. Madam President, we'd love to take a picture right now if that would be okay with you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, and we're very excited to honor the World Games team, and we look forward in the next 100 days to have all of these visitors and have the world here in front of Birmingham. Counselors, without objection, if you would allow me to suspend the rules, I will take a brief break in order to take the picture. Is that okay? We'll break for five minutes. Thank you. Maybe they'll just stand behind us, I think. Short remarks, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, say a few words. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here, everyone. I am excited and happy to be here as we celebrate being 100 days out from the World Games 2022 and for the announcement of the Old Glory Relay as this flag that I brought in is relayed from one veteran to another. It will connect thousands of Americans in countless communities as it makes its trek from Washington, D.C. to here in Birmingham, Alabama. Thanks to the World Games 2022 Airbus and Team Red, White, and Blue, that connection will be made. And I am honored and excited to be the veteran that will be running that flag in on July 7th into the Protective Life Stadium alongside Mayor Woodfin before the kickoff of the World Games. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, I don't know if anyone had any comments, but I know I feel I echo each of our sentiments of how important it is to have you carry that flag and relay that flag amongst other veterans, and it shows our support and thanks for your service. Thank you so much. Counselors, anyone have any comments? Thank you all again. Counselors, at this time we return back to our agenda, and Mr. Clerk, would you give us the items that are considered for consent?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two. Have items two, three, and four on consent. Page three, items five and six are on consent. Page eight, item number seven is on consent. Page nine, we have items 12 and 13 on consent. Page 10, we have items 14 and 16 on consent. 15 was removed. Page 11, we have items 18, 19, and 20 on consent. Page 12, we have items 21, 22, 23, and 24 on consent. Page 13, we have items 25 and 26 on consent. And on page 14, we have items 27 and 28 on consent. And again, you have three additional items that should be here.
All right, thank you very much. Before we take the motion, I would like to ask counselors if there are any items that you would like to have removed or added to consent. Okay, Counselor Woods. That's item 16 on page 10, thank you. Any other items you'd like to have removed, counselors, or added? All right, thank you. Before we consider and take the vote, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, which are indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda.
Counselor Williams, and I heard Counselor Woods as well, correct? Or the second?
I saw there was more.
Speak with one voice.
Okay, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That motion passes. All the items that were considered as consent have been approved. So if you were here to hear for one of those items, your item has been approved, and you may leave at this time unless you want to continue to join us. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the first item.
Okay. Item one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2021-23, to change zone district boundaries from D3, single-family district, to C2, general commercial district found by Bush Hills. Connections, applicant representative, owner of Birmingham City Schools for property located at 1034 Terrace West and situated in southeast quarter of Section 33, township 17, South Raines Street West, and hearing of all ownership parties, motion, please.
Move.
Second.
All right, got it.
All right, thank you. At this time, Counselor Abbott, if you'll conduct the hearing for us, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Dambro, would you read our case, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Tim Dambro. I serve as chief planner for the city of Birmingham, and this is KCAC 2021-23 in the Bush Hills neighborhood. The proposed use is a community event space, community garden, and outdoor urban farm. The subject property is approximately 5.23 acres. Currently, zone D3, single-family district. The site contains the former Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. The school was built in 1928 and served the community until it closed in 2010. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are all single-family residential zone D3. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The applicant is proposing to continue using the site as a community garden, urban farm. They also are proposing to renovate portions of the school to serve as a community event space. The applicant, Bush Hills Connection, is a 501(c)(3) that works alongside the Bush Hills Neighborhood Association to advance growth and vitality in the neighborhood. The Bush Hills Connections began the community garden in 2018 as part of the city's Love Your Block program. The Wilson School site serves as a central hub, outdoor safe haven, and readily accessible source of free, fresh, healthy food for the Bush Hills community. Bush Hills Connection in collaboration with UAB Live Health Smart Alabama proposes to repurpose the cafeteria and gymnasium spaces. Proposed uses of the space include after-school enrichment program for elementary through high school students, neighborhood meetings, social and fundraising activities, adult career development programs, health and wellness classes, youth activities, community education programs, space rental to other community organizations for meetings and activities, and community meetings to plan for built environment improvements. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low. This land use category is exclusively in single-family homes. In addition to schools, churches, and neighborhoods serving, public uses are allowed. The proposed rezoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan. However, the Southwest Area Framework Plan does recommend redevelopment of this site, and some of those recommended uses include senior living facility, job training, and a small mixed-use development potentially. The zoning ordinance, all other proposed uses are allowed within the C2 district. An event center is permitted by special exception in the C2 district, subject to a few conditions dealing with traffic and hours of operation. The indoor farm, urban, I'm sorry, the outdoor urban farm is permitted by special exception in the C2 district with a list of conditions that are required to be followed. An apiary is permitted as accessory use in the C2 district with certain conditions that are listed here. Once the public and event space is designated, parking requirements must be met. A public facility requires one parking space per 300 feet of gross floor area, and an event center requires one space per 1,000 gross floor area. The development must meet all landscaping buffering requirements outlined in the city's zoning ordinance, and it must comply with all requirements of the stormwater ordinance. The Bush Hills Neighborhood Association met at its regularly scheduled meeting on October 26, 2021, to review the proposed project and voted to support the rezoning request. That vote was 31 to approve and 0 to deny. The Framework Plan Implementation Committee, properties located within the Southwest Framework Plan area and the committee deferred to the neighborhood for the recommendation. Although the zoning request is not consistent with the long-range land use plan, staff believes the request has merit for approval, subject to the following Q conditions. There, these Q conditions list only those uses that will be allowed. There's a long list of those. And then, the Zoning Advisory Committee met at its regularly scheduled meeting on January 18, 2022, and voted to recommend approval of the request with the Q conditions recommended by staff. Planning and zoning committee likewise met at a regularly scheduled meeting on February 9, 2022, and voted to recommend approval to the city council with the Q conditions that are also recommended by staff. And that concludes your report.
Thank you, Mr. Dambro. This is a public hearing. First, we'd like to hear from the applicant, and then we will hear from anyone who is here to support or anyone who is here to oppose.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you all for the opportunity to come before you. My name is Johnny Stunson. I live on Bush Hills at 1613 8th Avenue West and have raised three sons and have raised three sons there on Bush Hills. And I am glad and proud to be a resident of Bush Hills. And also, we are here today because we know that in order to build healthy, competitive neighborhoods, that you must start from within the community. We cannot depend on others to just to do everything. So we decided, along with my neighborhood president, that we would form a 501(c)(3) that started in 2018. And we are unapologetically, the Neighborhood Association, Bush Hills Connections, and we are joined at the hip because it doesn't work any other way. You can't do it without being in a true partnership. So since starting this adventure and journey to build a healthy, competitive Bush Hills, we have been able to have a garden that we planted what we call a community garden. And it was flourishing, going. So we acquired the space of Wilson School grounds at first. We have a 10-year lease on it. So we planted this community garden, and it started feeding so many people, and there was a demand. We decided to bring in a tractor and plant the whole Bush Hills grounds, which little did we know, we had done our due diligence in going to USDA to get the paperwork that we needed, but little did we know that we ended up with an urban farm, and we produce over 50,000 pounds of food. We have been able to partner, find partnerships, to help us to do this work because, again, we do not apologize, it takes resources to go on to build a healthy, competitive neighborhood. We were able to acquire a grant for about $1,800 or less from the city of Birmingham, and that's how we started the community garden. And since that time, we have been able to acquire not only the grounds of Wilson School, but we now have a 50-year lease, thanks to the city of Birmingham, on the building itself because that building has been a vacant, sore-sore spot in our community for many years. And we've had people to come in, break in, it looked like an atomic bomb hit it. But thanks to our partnerships that we have been able to work with anywhere from AARP, Birmingham City Schools, UAB, our partners back here, we have been able to build partnerships to bring in funding that we needed and find partners that's now ready to help us to renovate the Bush Hills, uh, Wilson School, which is much needed in Bush Hills because we do not have a rec center there. We do not have a place where our kids can go and play basketball, that we do tutoring, we renovated two of the trailers so that we could open it up. But we have been very fortunate because during the pandemic, one of the things that happened is that we were all stuck indoors. So, but by us having the garden, we were able to bring seniors out, build high-rise beds for them to do their work in terms, instead of bending over and kneeling. We have about, I think, eight high-rise beds out there for them. Our children was able to come out in an open environment Our children was able to come out in an open environment, in a safe environment, to do exercise, to do yoga. We did tutoring there in an outdoor environment. But as many of you all know, the weather changes. So we are very fortunate to have been able to acquire the building so that we can continue the much-needed work that we need to do on Bush Hills. And yes, we do count on the city. And they have been, I can't tell you how great the city has been in terms of just lending us their assistance to help us to continue to build a healthy Bush Hills. So we are here today just asking you to consider the rezoning because that's what we need on Bush Hills. We made every effort to contact, we walked the neighborhood around the perimeter, contacted neighbors, asked what they thought. We got letters brought in to you all to endorsement of this, of the Bush Hills Urban Farm and Garden. So we are here today just to ask your consideration of the rezoning, and we appreciate it.
Madam President? But we always have each other's back.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Walladine Streeter, and I am the president of the Bush Hills Neighborhood with pride. We are so happy to be coming for you all today to ask you for this rezoning. We need it, and it's to benefit the whole city of Birmingham, not just the Bush Hills neighborhood. We have people coming from all areas of Birmingham to receive free vegetables on our harvest days. And we announce it on all our websites. And we are so happy that we have come this far through faith and through the help of the city of Birmingham, our city mayor, our city council, and our Birmingham City School system. Thank you all so much.
And one last thing I want to say, you know, we're not building the model, we're not building the model just for Bush Hills. We have had the support of UAB Sustainable Smart Cities, Birmingham Southern College and their students that's helping to guide because we need warm bodies to do the work. We are working board the 501(c)(3). But we have been able to gain their support in developing a full business plan for what we're trying to do, a neighborhood improvement plan for what we're trying to do, and an implementation plan, and to help us look and identify resources. So we have the support we need. We just need the approval. And it is a scalable model. And it is a scalable model that we are willing to share within a neighborhood because we document it and document it well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We want to hear from people who are in the audience who are in support of this project. And of course, if there's anybody who's not. But I'm not expecting to see anybody who's not in favor of it. Ms. Williams?
Good morning. How are you? My name is April Marius Williams. I live at 1203 Bush Circle. I am almost a lifetime resident of Bush Hills. My family moved to Bush Hills in the 1970s. And I returned after marriage and living in Tuscaloosa in 2002. And I purchased my home, which was on the city's demolition list. And we rehabilitated it. It was a 1920s home, and I love it. So I said all that to let you know I'm invested in the community that I serve. And I am a part of Bush Hills Connections, and I am the volunteer manager of the Bush Hills Community Garden and Urban Farm. It has truly been a valuable asset to the community. I grew up in Enslie and used to walk to Mackel Pine Park. Unfortunately, my children didn't have that same benefit on Bush Hills because there is no park. There isn't any public place to gather. We have been fortunate that Birmingham Southern has been such a friend to Bush Hills as a valued partner and neighbor to allow us to have meetings and gatherings there. But we do not have any facilities of that nature in Bush Hills. And Bush Hills Woodrow Wilson School will afford us an opportunity to have those amenities for neighbors that call Bush Hills home. And so we would really appreciate, and we've been working with Birmingham City Schools, not just because I served on the board, but I had knowledge of a vacant property because I had served. But because we've been a good partner with Birmingham City Schools, they have allowed and granted us a 50-year lease. So that shows that they trust the work that we've been doing since 2018. It's not something that happened overnight. Rome wasn't built overnight. But it's a beautiful city today. And with your approval, Woodrow Wilson will be a beautiful complex for the residents of Bush Hills to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to support this endeavor. I'm Teresa Schuffelbarger. I'm with UAB. I'm the chief administrative officer of Live Health Smart Alabama. We are joining in partnership with the Bush Hills Connections and the Bush Hills Neighborhood Association in the redevelopment of the Woodrow Wilson School and the improvement and continued expansion of the urban garden. It will be quite the asset for the Bush Hills community as we seek to work together to increase opportunities for physical activity, for greater access to good nutrition, and for encouragement of wellness of the community. This will be a true asset for the community and, as has been noted, a template for other communities, not just in Birmingham, but across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Yes, ma'am. Got one more. I'm Johnny Gunn. President of Bellevue Heights Neighborhood. I live at 953 45th Street West, Enslie. Just like to say a few words in behalf of the Bush Hill neighborhood, neighborhood garden. I was born in the country. I know about farming, gardening, planting, reaping. I think that this is a good project for Bush Hill and the city of Birmingham. It's a good effort for the younger people to learn a little bit about farming and able to, you know, gain some experience on how to grow things and seeing the benefit from actually putting in some work. Not only the younger people, but also the older folks that, you know, don't have anything to do that liked it, got a green thumb, so to speak. So I just like to say that's a good thing. And I expect everyone to support it. Thank you.
Did y'all notice that Mr. Gunn's smile was almost as big as Vulcan mascot? I noticed that. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Are there any council members who would like to speak or who have questions, comments? President Protim?
Well, first off, I want to congratulate you all. You guys are the model neighborhood that I think the other 98 neighborhoods need to look after. You guys are literally what the 10 of us want in the neighborhood. Because a lot of times, it takes all of us to improve a neighborhood. A lot of people really blame us for a lot of things and not knowing the neighborhood has so much power. The fact that you guys were able to do all of this, and we only offered you guys, what, a $2,000 grant? This is... $1,500. I'm 1,500. Sorry, Ms. Williams. I really think this is great. This is what people need. Job training, community garden, healthy living, people of color. We have such health problems and not knowing that back in the day, our ancestors, that's how they were able to keep healthy because they were able to grow their own in the middle of this inflation. That's the important thing. My grocery store prices are going up. If you can just walk down the street to get your greens and your vegetables, knowing you know where your plants are coming from, that is just so amazing. Like, I'm so proud of you all. I really am. To this little community, if you guys can hear me, we need to go to Bush Hills neighborhood. Me and Mal after them. But I do have one question, just because my neighborhood is dealing with this problem. I see you guys have a chicken coop that's going to be there. No? Yes? No?
Our goal is to have one. We do not have one currently.
Okay. No, I say that because my neighborhood has been dealing with chickens roaming around, yeah, roaming around the neighborhood. And so I guess, what will be your plan to contain the chickens so it's not a nuisance to your neighbors?
Now, I could let our board president speak to that because she has chickens, and she has had chickens on Bush Hills for as long as I've known her.
For these five years?
And I have never seen her chickens outside of her chicken coop. And we would follow that model that she has already perfected.
Okay, good, good. I have to ask because I've gotten calls and says, "It's 5 o'clock in the morning. I hear..." Call, call, call. It's okay. But congratulations, you guys.
Yes, and by the way, roosters are illegal in the city of Birmingham, although we have them. Let's see. Ms. Tate?
Chairwoman, Councilor Abbott, good morning, ladies. Good morning, April. I just wanted to congratulate you all in like what you said about not being unapologetic and walking in your resilience. As Council Smitherman has said, this is a model that can be replicated throughout the city in the way that you guys have worked tirelessly to pour into the community and pour back into the young people. Because I can remember my grandfather got some land right across the street from his house. And we was always out there tilling and growing. And so it's amazing that you all are providing, you know, the fresh vegetables to the community and probably can get an expansion with some of these restaurants. Grow local and buy local. So thank you, and thank you to Mayor Wiffen and his team for supporting you and UAB. And so I'm gonna be knocking on y'all door. And kudos to Council Clark, just doing it real big. And so I'm like Council Smitherman, you got my full support. So thank you, ladies.
And Council Moore?
I want you all to know, as the president, we have had that discussion about roosters. No roosters.
Yeah, no, no roosters.
If I could take a moment of personal privilege, I wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, but one of the fabulous four BBs, that was one of the founding members of Bush Hills Connections, celebrates her birthday today. Happy birthday.
Awesome, awesome. Now, I just wanted to tell you all congratulations. I think this is a beautiful thing. I know growing up over there in Enslie on Bush Hills, 20th Place West, this would have been good for me to be able to come to this place and grow vegetables instead of being in the backyard, you know, just growing squash and cucumbers and things. And my grandmother like, "Yeah, listen, we could have came over there and, you know, had us a time." I'm looking at the pictures and I'm just like, man, this is amazing. Not only will people be able to get, you know, fresh vegetables and things of that nature, but it's just a beautiful space. And it's something about being outside in nature and, you know, having just a beautiful environment to be in that just brings you some calm. So I just salute you all, celebrate you. Thank you. And you have my full support as well.
Thank you. Council Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like, I saw y'all planning the zoning, and I thought that was your A-game, but you definitely kicked it up a notch today. But now, really, it's impressive what y'all have done. I know we kind of got some ideas from you guys when we were doing a community garden District 1. And now y'all are taking it to a level that's hard to follow. And so, but keep pushing. I mean, I think this is really impressive. And I think the more that, you know, people can see this be successful, I think that we can really expand this and do more. So really excited for you guys and just want to congratulate you.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn?
So I've been an admirer of Bush Hills for a long time. I remember coming to Miss Walladine's meetings. It's been years ago. Great participation, and I think that's part of why, you know, you guys have been able to achieve what you've been able to achieve. You've got a neighborhood full of neighbors who are, you know, involved in pushing things like this forward. I did have like a technical question about the rezoning. Are there Q conditions that are attached to the commercial district? You know, so it's going from single-family to general commercial. Are there things that are being excluded? Because I understand that you guys have 50-year lease, but the zoning, you know, stays with the property. So looking out, assuming that you're still around, you know, 50 years or something may come up and you're not around in 50 years. Are there excluded uses in this zoning proposal?
Yes, sir. The Q conditions basically state those uses that will be allowed. So these are the only uses that would be allowed, and they're tailored, you know, for this use. So when you read through the list, you know, you'll see, you know, fitness center, you know, office, park, greenway, you know, public building, urban farm, childcare, community garden, mobile market, public market, place of worship, school, solar facilities, the chicken coop. You know, there is some duplex, triplex, quadplex. I guess there's a potential there. Event center, the trade school, urban farm, apiary, you know. So it is, the uses that were selected were tailored, you know, for this project.
Okay, thank you.
And the antennas are because they already have one because I asked about that. Counselor?
Yes, I just remembered that one of our residents, Ms. Gloria Abercrombie, who could not be here to speak, asked that a letter be read from her as her... So you want to read it or, Tim?
I could. Let me see if I have it. I know that we distributed that this morning.
I have it. Oh, you have it. Okay. I'm sure she's probably watching, so I'd like to just read it into the record if you don't mind, quickly. So, "From a concerned Bush Hills resident, this is Ms. Gloria Abercrombie, 501 12th Street West. Community Resource Center is her title. She says, 'Words carry messages and establish ideas and perceptions. Words are important. It is crucial that before the city council votes on the Woodrow Wilson School item, that words be unmistakable, direct to the point, and indicative of the type of activities to be held at the school building.'" "Three, Bush Hills Connections endeavors to improve the neighborhood by bringing in additional resources and support, a healthier and richer lifestyle for the residents. Four, a community resource center enhances this effort. Five, an event center would degrade and lessen the impact of our efforts to elevate our neighborhood. Six, I've discussed this issue with several of my neighbors and all expressed deep concern with how people in our area view event centers, and we want a resource center in name and in purpose." And I just wanted to share that because Ms. Gloria went to great lengths to make sure that we had, even though she couldn't be here, that we had the letter to represent her interest in the semantics of, you know, what we call the center. So I just, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak regarding this issue? Well, I think we're ready to vote, but I just want to say, nothing like this happens without one heck of a lot of hard work. And so you have provided a template. And if anybody else wants to copy you, that's a great thing, but nobody is going to do it for you. You know, so we know from you ladies being here today and gentlemen that a lot of hard work has gone on and a lot more is going to continue to go on. And, you know, the city will be supportive, but y'all are doing the work. And that's every neighborhood that wants to do one of these things, there has to be a group of people who wants to do the work. So I commend you. Thank you for this request. We're ready to vote. Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll call for the vote. All right, thank you. That item passes. I do want to congratulate this dynamic group of, it's March, it's Women's History Month. We have a dynamic group of ladies that came before us today. And so we thank you. You are not only a model for how neighborhoods can make a change in their community, but you're, all three of you are just such great mentors. And especially for me, for your community work, your community activism, your community love. And I thank you, each of you. And Ms. Streeter, I think people mispronounce our name just about as much as anybody. So from Walladine to Wardine, thank you. Thank you all very much. All right, next item.
Should be item eight. In ordinance, authorizing and approving the mayor to execute a First Amendment to lease agreement and a First Amendment to redevelopment agreement with the downtown Jimmy Hill Mission, under which the lease agreement and development agreement will be amended to provide that the Jimmy Hill Mission purchased the former Thomas School, property located at 3422 Second Avenue North.
If you could speak up just a little bit, Mr. Clerk. This doesn't have a trouble.
Former Thomas School property located at 3422 Second Avenue North, prior to the expiration of the lease term of 40 years for $100, owned or before April 30, 2022, and the mayor is authorized to execute a deed and such other documents and instruments as are required to finalize the sale of the property upon the terms of the contract. This is the item of permanent operation that U.C. passed today. Do you want a question today?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that's for U.C. and a motion.
Motion on the item.
Second.
All right, I have it before you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, this item was presented to the administration committee and it was approved from the administration committee. So, um, Mayor and your team, if you would just like to give us any information about this item.
Yes, yes, ma'am. This is a short version, as Mr. Stanley comes up. Um, we, we attempt, we continue to support organizations that are doing the impact work regarding addressing homelessness. Jimmy Hale Mission has, um, their mission work has been very impressive. Um, they've continued to expand their campus. That original agreement was a lease. Uh, we think that that work can continue to be beneficial, so we want to terminate that lease earlier and, and go straight into allowing them to own the actual facility. With that, I'll bring Mr. Stanley up to give more context and detail.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Uh, as Mayor Woodfin said, this, uh, is operating off an existing lease that was entered into in 2002 of the Thomas School, which the city owns, to the Jimmy Hale Mission. They have redeveloped the property or use it to provide their services, uh, providing specters for, for homeless. The lease contemplated that after its 20-year term, Jimmy Hale Mission would acquire the property either by paying market value, in which case they would take it free and clear, could do whatever they wanted to with it, or they could pay $100 and take it subject to restrictions that they continue to provide their services. They've requested that, uh, we, they go ahead and move up that time of purchase until now. They've been there 20 years and they're willing to pay the $100 and then take it with the restriction that they continue to use it to provide services for clients. I, I will mention Board Chair Perrin Carroll from Jimmy Hale is here, along with Scotty Colson.
Thank you very much. Counselors, do you have any questions regarding this item? Council Williams?
Well, I guess it's not really a question. Um, one, one is I have to say hello to Scotty Colson, um, who I interned for many, many years ago with Mayor Larry Langford, so, um, it's good to see you again. But, um, thank you for continuing to find ways that we can partner with third-party organizations, um, to address homelessness and, and, um, the transition of people in and out of different parts or in times of their lives where they need the assistance to get back on their feet. Um, you know, there's a lot of conversation about what's the city going to do, what's the city going to do, what's the city going to do. This is a great example of what the city's going to do. We're going to partner with those that are professionals and experts in the field, um, because the city is not that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any others? Council Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to commend Jimmy Hale for the fine job that they did, um, many years ago, restoring the old Thomas-Pettiford School. And I like to note that it's Thomas-Pettiford, because we call it the Thomas School, but it's the only structure that bears William Reuben Pettiford's name in any way. And he was quite a hero, uh, for, uh, early Birmingham and a, and a pioneer, uh, the founder, the former minister, Reverend, let's see, he was a minister at 16th Street and he was the founder of the Alabama Penny Savings Bank. So I like to remember that that's the Thomas Pettiford School. And, you know, we could have lost it because it was going to be a lot cheaper for Jimmy Hale to demolish the building than to preserve it. And so just want to commend them for that and for taking it beyond. They've really done a great job with the campus and, you know, I'm really proud of what they've done, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we had one of, yes, for Tim, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Hey, Scotty. Um, because I pointed him to the land bank, so obviously I love Scotty. I do have a question. Um, is this going to be a second location or are you guys going to transition into this new property eventually?
It's, it's the same location.
Same location? Okay, okay. Um, and I do want to give kudos to Mayor Woodfin. I know, uh, was it Council Woods, Madam President, Council Clark, and Council Tate. We went to his 100 days transition event and in his transition report, which you guys should read, he, um, his subcommittee addressed homelessness. And so I think this is one of the small steps he's taking towards addressing it and hopefully you guys will read all that so we can support him and his administration with homelessness and the world gains with the tight homes. Uh, so I just want to thank you for continuing to strive towards this. Um, a lot of mayors don't really address homelessness. They do, but they don't. They just kind of throw money at it, but you're, you and your team are doing progressive ways towards addressing it. Also, there are some federal grants, guys, that we can use for homelessness. I'm gonna send you that after council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, counselors will call for the vote. All right. Thank you. That vote is unanimous. And again, we thank you for your service to our community and we're very excited for this collaboration with the city and for the work that you're doing. So thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Clark, we have items nine, 10, and 11, and they're all related, but I know they're permanent operations. Can we call all of them together or do we have to do them separately?
Call them up.
All right, thank you.
Item nine, ordinance to approve the sale of cemetery lot located at Lot 39, F and N 8, Block 3, Oak Hill Cemetery to Charles Edward, uh, Say, Jr. and Betsy Wyatt Saab for a purchase price of $10,000. And authorizing the mayor to execute a deed to convey such lot. And then we'll go to 10, an ordinance approving the sale of cemetery lot known as Lot 3C, Block 13 in Oak Hill Cemetery, uh, to Richard Arrington Jr. for a purchase price of $10. And authorizing the mayor to execute a deed to convey the lot. And an ordinance approving the sale of cemetery lot block, uh, lot known as Lot 6, Block 38A, S in Oak Hill Cemetery to Stephen Bostick for the purchase price of $30,000. Authorizing the mayor to execute a deed to convey such lot. And I need U.C. for all items to entertain them for passes today.
All right, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that's U.C. for all three, four items, I'm sorry.
Three, second.
I, I need a motion on that.
Second.
All right. I have some items over for you.
All right, thank you very much. This, these three items were presented to the administration committee and so, counselors, we, uh, would like to have the mayor's team, I believe Mr. Stanley, would present these three items to us.
For the council, again, Jim Stanley, Office of City Attorney. We have, uh, three cemetery, uh, plot deeds for Oak Hill Cemetery. The city owns the cemetery. It's been managed for a number of years by the Oak Hill Memorial Association, uh, contract and also their delegated responsibilities in the city code for the, for the management of the cemetery. Three plots, you've got the information before you. I'll be glad to answer your questions. We also have Mr. Stuart Oze, who's the Executive Director of the Memorial Association here as well.
Thank you very much. I do know in pre-council, we did have some questions regarding, um, just, there were three different price points or three different, um, ways that these lots will be acquired. And I, so I'll allow you, Councilor Quinn, to ask your question from pre-council meeting.
Yes, so, um, yeah, just please explain, you know, the, the price differences between the, the three items.
So there's, uh, and, um, okay, I'll let Mr. Roost do that.
Good morning, sir.
He's the Executive Director at Oak Hill since 2001, longest I've ever held a job. And it's nice because I have 11,000 people under me that never complain. But, um, as far as the price difference, it has to do, the way that we've set up our lot sales, um, is based on what would be considered a full burial space. So if you came to Oak Hill and said, "I want to buy a space for burial," it would be $5,000. That would be an eight by, eight by four plot is what you need for a vault these days. Uh, that may change. I'm kind of working and, um, trying to get us to where we could possibly do green burials there. That's something that we have to research, which would reduce the profile, so maybe we could get more spaces in again, as it was originally organized. So when you look at two of those lots, the one that sold for $10,000, there were two full burial spaces in that lot, and that's why it went for $10,000. The other one, although it had more square footage and if you calculated it out and you divided it, you'd say, "Oh, there are seven spaces in there." That's not actually accurate because that is an irregular lot where you couldn't, it had a triangle at the end. We were trying to give the actual square footage and we sold the entire lot to the family, but there were only six burial spaces, which six times five equals the $30,000. Uh, to address the Richard Arrington, um, lot, uh, we were going on a precedent that was set in 2011 when the mayor's office requested of Oak Hill Cemetery, uh, at that time, to allow the burial of Reverend Shuttlesworth and to donate the lot for that, which we did gladly. Um, it had come up in one of our, uh, board meetings, uh, the historic significance of Mayor Arrington as the first African-American mayor of, uh, the city of Birmingham, that it was, it was proposed and then it was approved by our board, um, to grant this lot to him. I don't know why, I think we put a $10 fee on that, um, just, just to have some sort of an exchange on it. But this is something that we have rarely done in my tenure there. It's actually only been done twice. Um, it's, it's not a normal thing and our pricing is not in any way arbitrary.
Thank you. Council Quinn?
Yeah, that answers it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, counselors? Yes, Ms. Clark?
I just want to make a comment because, um, I love Oak Hill. I think it's a really special place and a cool place to visit, even though you, you're not in the habit of visiting cemeteries, but it's more like a park and people do jog there and because of the dignitaries buried there, like Fred Shuttlesworth, William Reuben Pettiford, who I just mentioned, um, with the Thomas Pettiford School. Also, A.H. Parker is buried there. And then there are city fathers from 1870s who are buried there and their stones have all these really cool inscriptions. And, uh, one of the fundraisers that Oak Hill would do, they would have historians come back and reenact some of the people who are buried there, which is pretty wild. But, um, they just got a distinction of being, uh, one of five arboretums in the state and that's something I think for us to be excited about because there are only five in the state. And so, um, Stuart is our steward of this special place.
Thank you.
That I think could be a real tourist attraction, but one of the issues they're dealing with, like, like most of Birmingham, is stormwater issues and we don't want to become like New Orleans with floating graves, so we, we gotta help them figure out how to do something with the stormwater management at Oak Hill. So I just wanted to point that out. I did serve on his board for a very short time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Council Clark.
Ms. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Mr. Oaks and I came in at the same time, 2001, and the only difference is you have 11,000 people who never complain. And, and that does make a difference, but, uh, especially when we're talking about stormwater problems. So, but what I wanted to say is that, um, you know, back in the day, before television and radio, people used to recreate picnic, visit cemeteries all the time. They would take their picnic baskets and go to the cemetery and that was a big deal. You'd see all your friends there. Well, obviously with, with modern times, people do not hang out in cemeteries usually. A few joggers, I guess, but that's not really hanging out. But Oak Hill really is a beautiful place and the history of Birmingham, it just comes alive in there. And I loved the actors and actresses who would dress in period clothes and act as some of the people who, famous people who are buried there, uh, including that famous madam that we've all heard of. So that was, that's, to me, that is the most memorable part of Oak Hill to me was when y'all did that. So I hope when the pandemic is finished and everything, you'll do it again because, you know, I know members of the council are laughing, but it really is impressive because they had very good actors and actresses playing these people and, and dressed in period clothes. You kind of thought, you know, and they know, knew the history of Birmingham. So it was a cool thing to do. That and Halloween were both fun times at Oak Hill. And, uh, you know, the pandemic has, has taken some of the fun out of life, but I'm sure we can get it back.
Absolutely. If I could add one more thing, I, I, just, just to give a little more history. Uh, back in 1918, the fledgling American Audubon Society, William Pearson, I believe was the president, he'd sent out a pamphlet, uh, which got notice of our young organization at the time that had only been put together for five years. Um, and it was proposing using public spaces as bird sanctuaries. Oak Hill was one of the very first pilot projects and we used to have these little cloth signs, I still have one remaining, which I keep under lock and key. And it says, "Under penalty of six months in prison or $500 fine," back in 1918, "you are not to disturb any nests, uh, or nesting practices of birds." So we've always had a tradition as a green space and building on that is, is the arboretum we're very, very excited about. Um, we're on the Morton Registry, which is a global recognized, um, registry. It's not just something in the back of Macau's magazine. It's, it's something pretty prestigious, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I'll bite. Um, I want to get some information, I guess, on the last time the event. I don't want to call it a show, but what they're, what they're talking about as far as the actual event where people dressed up in their performances, when's the last time?
When was the last time? It was right before the pandemic, so I'm trying to remember. I think we did that in, uh, 2018, 2019. I can't remember now. When did the pandemic start?
Are you sure?
Yeah, it was 2019.
2020.
Yeah, so 2019 was the last one we had because, um, but we are actually starting back up our first Saturday tours this Saturday, and these are just standard tours. It's, I've got some really great docents that have been working with us. Uh, this one is going to be on murders and other tragedies in Birmingham. Uh, it will start at 10:00 a.m. from the, uh, memorial chapel and then they'll, it's, the, the tours are usually about an hour and a half. And I, I invite all of the city council individually or collectively, uh, to come out sometime. And I would love to personally give a tour and, and show off some of the features of our cemetery. It really is a beautiful space. Another thing that we plan to bring back is we have movie nights. We've got a big screen we set up behind our chapel and there's a nice little bowl where people bring their blankets, their lawn chairs. I call it zero-budget productions, uh, and we scour the best of the public domain films that we don't have to pay licensing for and we, we just generally have a really good time out there.
Yeah, well, like admittedly, I'm bad at keeping up with all the events that are, that go on and so, uh, no clue, but I guess we could maybe come out, uh, up to four at a time, so.
I'd love to have you all.
All right, thank you very much. Counselors, any other comments or questions? Thank you so much. We'll call for the vote.
Oh, this is for all three actions?
Yes.
That vote should be up.
All right, thank you very much. The, all three of those items passes. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item 15 is on page 10. A resolution pursuant to Section 1140, that's one code about 1975, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a Third Amendment to the agreement with the Lithia House Incorporated to increase the... to the agreement with the Alethia House Incorporated to increase the agreement amount by $308,000, with the total amount not to exceed $1,297,244 to contract for authorized goods and services. The Alethia House Incorporated will provide application intake screening and case management services to support the program administration, management compliance, and financial reporting required to administer the Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Motion, please.
I move approval.
All right, thank you, councilors. This item is before us. This item was, there was a question regarding this mayor during our pre-council meeting. And we really wanted to bring this forward for more information to the public. But I'll leave Councilor Quinn in. And that was, did you have a specific question?
Yeah, more of a general question, you know, about how the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is proceeding, you know, where we are in terms of distributing the amount of funding that we've been allocated. And then, you know, specifically Alethia House's role in that partnership.
Yeah, so Madam President, Councilor Dr. Quinn, and all the council. This is, I guess, probably the best example of called doing good. We actually exhausted our funds. I'm not sure that we actually went looking for these additional funds, but we exhausted our funds. I think the only city in the state of Alabama, if I'm correct, had actually partnered with a third party organization that was efficient enough to deploy our funds in such a way where the federal government was like, they've taken monies away from other cities and organizations responsible for their funding. Say, there's some additional dollars in the kitty. We understand you all still have citizens that are pinched and hurting. Here's some additional resources. Your partnerships with Alethia House has been an A-plus in the model on how to get these funds out. Therefore, here are some additional funds. Mr. Hatcher can explain in detail more if I've missed anything or if I didn't capture your question with an appropriate answer.
Thanks, Mr. Hatcher. Good morning.
Morning, good morning. Yes, we are the only city in the state or jurisdiction in the state that has expended all of our original ERA allocations. So we did seek out at our quest from the Treasury through their reallocation process, an additional $6.6 million to handle the queue of applications that we have remaining. So we did more water that funding, which is why we're seeing this on the agenda today, to continue our relationship with Alethia House so that we can serve these residents that we have in our pipeline for approval. And also, if there are any funds remaining, to continue with new applications. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Alethia House serves as our administrative arm. They review all of the applications that we intake. They correspond with the residents, the applicants themselves. They correspond with the utility companies. They correspond with the landlords. And they actually go through and they determine eligibility for the requests. They set the amount of the requests. And then they communicate with us to approve for payment of all rental and utility requests. Our staff internally at City Hall have the final review and approval of all of the requests before we send it out for payment.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. At this time, we'll call for the vote. Thank you. That item passes. And I do want to, I am very delighted that we have this opportunity to extend this support to our residents. And I want to also thank Alethia House. I believe we had very few complaints about how those funds have been administered. And I know that I had a few residents to call me and they felt that they were treated as clients and they had very good people that worked with them and assisted them. So thank you very much. I think it's great for us to continue this relationship with Alethia House. Next item, please.
Item 16. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development owner before May 15, 2022, the city's final action plan, one year use of fund submission for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, in accordance with the consolidated four million allocation budget and authorize the mayor to enter into a necessary agreements with the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, Housing and Urban Development Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and Housing Opportunities for Person Age Program to acquire services.
I move approval.
All right.
All right, councilors, this item is before us. And this is another item that was asked to be removed from consent during our pre-council meeting. What's that, you, Dr. Quinn, or Dr.? I'm sorry. Why do you call you Dr. Woods?
Stop shooting.
Councilor Woods.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the administration just to kind of go over a couple of points on this, one, this pot of money where it comes from and as well as the allocations and how they're determined and so.
Yes, sir. Councilor Woods, Madam President and Council. Our Community Development Block Grant Dollars are, we administer them out of our Community Development Department. These dollars come from HUD. Adrian Stitt is here to come before you provide more detail of how the CDBG funding works. So with that, come on up.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm Adrian Stitt. I serve as a deputy director in community development. So the funding that we receive comes from HUD annually. We've been receiving those fundings for about over 40 years from the inception of the different programs. And what we have to do, we put out an application process. So agencies apply through this process. We'd have public hearings, usually in December and January, for people to participate, ask questions about the application process and so forth. Then we close out. We review all the applications and determine the recommendations based on the applications that were submitted. And we present those recommendations to you all.
Could you tell them at a high level? I know they haven't. How many organizations are CDBG funding supporting this year? Just total number?
We support around 40 organizations in multiple formats. They serve the homeless with shelters, with homeless prevention services, rapid rehousing services. We serve seniors, adult daycares. We serve youth projects. We do housing rehab projects for all of our vulnerable populations within the city of Birmingham, based on the HUD income requirements.
Any other questions, councilors? Thank you, Ms. Stitt. We appreciate you. At this time, we'll call for the vote. All right, councilors, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 17. A resolution appointing one full-time municipal court judge, place two for four years, term expiring March 29, 2026. One part-time municipal court judge, place three for two years, term expiring March 29, 2024. And reappointing six municipal judges, three full-time for four years, terms expiring March 29, 2026, and three part-time for two terms expiring March 29, 2024.
Councilors, can we have a? All right. At this time, councilors, I'd like to make you aware that the Administration Committee reviewed the applications. These openings have been open for quite some time. And we did have reappointments to consider as well as the appointment for a full-time judge as well as a part-time judge. Both of those individuals that left those places open, they resigned either to go on to other judgeships or for other personal reasons. So at this time, after review by the Administration Committee, we would like to put forward for reappointment, Andre Sparks, term expiring March 29, 2026. Jeffrey P. Gilliam, term expiration is place four, March 29, 2026. Charles Price II, place five, term expires March 29, 2026. Anita Westbury, place one, term expires March 29, 2024. Lee Loder, place two, term expires March 29, 2024. And Jamarion Moore, place four, term expires March 29, 2024. The appointments are for the full-time judge position, place two. Larisha Cade Spearman, that term expires March 29, 2026. And Mr. Michael Thomas Clark for place three. That is also a part-time. That one is a part-time and is for March 29, 2024. Any discussion? We have a motion in a second. This time, we'll call for the vote. All right, thank you very much, councilors. Thank you for the approval of those appointments. We do have Judge Andre Sparks with us. And I'm not sure this, Lee Loder behind the mask. These are the masked judges. And so as a presiding judge, Judge Sparks, would you like to say something? I believe we have one of our new appointees in the audience as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank you for this time of indulgence. And on behalf of the people whose lives you've just touched, I want to say a few things. I also want to identify Michael Clark as being in the audience as well. And so I think he was just appointed to a part-time position. And so certainly wouldn't want to overlook him. But to Mayor Woodson, our brother of many, many areas, good morning. To Councilor, Council President Alexander, Council President Pro Tem Smithman, Councilors Abbott, Clark, Moore, O'Quinn, Tate, Williams, and Woods. And the reason I call you by name is because I came to talk to you individually. And I think it's important that you acknowledge people when they bless you. I don't know sometimes if you are always cognizant, but there's a powerful force emanates from this chamber when the duly elected representatives are in place and conducting the people's business. Power which does not exist individually, but in the collective. Majority has the power to change the very landscape and trajectory of our city. When you vote, you embody the vision of the executive, speak the will of the people, and you confirm the hard work of all the employees. And you validate the very purpose for your election. With its quadrennial metamorphosis and electoral empowerment, re-empowerment, this council establishes the legacy of Birmingham, one vote at a time. When you vote, you embody the vision of dreams from people you probably have never seen. At a macro level, each vote redesigns our city. For example, July 18, 2006, the vote of this council created Railroad Park. April 8, 2008, your vote created funding for the Crossplex changing Five Points West. But your votes also alter the city on a micro level. Your votes have the power to change lives individually. There's a child from Harriman Park, LA City, today who's affected by your votes on a micro level. He's been the hope and dreams of some folks and neighbors you'll never be. I know this to be true because I'm that child from Harriman Park. On August 26, 2008, your vote changed my life. On December 11, 2012, the vote of this council changed my life. On January 3, 2017, again, this council's vote changed my life. And once again today, I'm honored to say you have directly affected my life. But more specifically, you validated the dreams of Doris and Cedric, Leela and George, neighbors you won't meet on this side of heaven, who raised me and who prayed for me and gave me the best chance at a good God-fearing life that they could. When you vote for me, you co-signed all my life's good choices and you've taken the sting out of my bad choices. When you vote for me, you validated the professional choices I've made to serve the citizens of this city by holding them accountable, but in the most compassionate way we possibly can. From a faith perspective, your vote today has reaffirmed my belief in the powerlessness of those who have tried to stop me or thwart me. And you've refreshed the scripture that I've read and learned so many years ago that there's not a weapon that can be formed against me that's going to prosper. You've reminded me that I'm more than a conqueror through Him who gives me strength. Your work is powerful. Sometimes it's problematic. But for our citizens, please never forget, no matter how routine or administrative it may seem, your work is also very personal. Thank you for your confidence in my ability to continue serving. Thank you, Councilor Abbott. And I point you out because for four times over 14 years, you voted for me. That does not go unnoticed. That's very, very personal. Thank you for saying yes. Thank you, Mayor Woodson, for your leadership. Thank you for your continued expressed confidence in my ability to continue leading this court at this time. At a macro level, the court has been altered by your vote today. But at a micro level, the individuals who you have blessed with your vote have been changed. Thank you for validating David's words in scripture. I've been young, now I'm old. But I've never seen the righteous forsaken or his seed begging for bread. Thank you. May God bless the mayor and the city council of the city of Birmingham. I bless you.
Thank you, Judge.
I want to say this. I did that personally, but I know all the judges, Judge Loder is here. Judge Lett Chambers is here. All the other judges, Judge Price, Judge Jeff Gilliam, Judge Jamarion Moore, and Judge Anita Westbury. I know they extend their heartfelt thank you for all you've done, not just this vote, but how you continuously fund our asks to help the citizens of Birmingham. We'll continue to do that. We'll certainly be back. I was thinking, this is the first time I've been in this chamber in about two years. But there's a sweet spirit in here. There's a sweet spirit in this place. And it's certainly not the spirit that was in here the last time I was in here. God bless you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge Sparks. I believe the last time you were in here, you administered my oath after a very contentious round to be appointed. So I'm glad you're here for a different occasion today. So I thank you so much. We do have Judge Loder that's here. Of course, we all know Judge Loder has been on this side of the day as before. And so we are very honored to have him here. And it was a pleasure to participate in the opportunity to reappoint you. And we have, what would we say? Judge Lett, thank you. Judge Lett Michael Clark. And so we thank you and have you here as well. Councilors, I don't know if you have any comments, but go ahead, Dr. Quinn.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Judge Sparks for his leadership. You know, I don't know that folks really appreciate our municipal court's role in law enforcement. You know, our first responders are what people see. But without our municipal court, our law enforcement is incomplete. And so they really serve, you know, an extremely critical role in making sure that, you know, the expectations that we put forth in our city code are enforced. So thank you for that. So thank you for that. And I want to also thank you for always being extremely accessible. That is something I truly, truly appreciate. I cannot overemphasize how valuable that is. So thank you. And at the risk of being a buzzkill, I do want to take this opportunity to, to have you kind of speak to where we are in the terms of, in terms of the dockets. You know, I know that the pandemic has been extremely disruptive to, you know, the functioning of the municipal court. And at one point, you know, I think perhaps a year ago, when I had virtual interviews with you and all of the folks who applied, you informed me that, you know, we were, the dockets were extremely lengthy. So, you know, where, where are we currently and kind of what's the, the path to getting those dockets cleared?
Thank you for the moment.
Refrain.
And, and this is important because we can't close as a court. We always have to remain accessible. And as long as Birmingham Police Department is out doing what it does, we always have to provide a place for those individuals to come and to receive their constitutional appointments, if you will. And so to that end, throughout the period of the pandemic, we've had to adjust and make sure that we were always operational at our David Barnes location. We have been able to, with the help of the council and the administration, increase our video presence, our online presence, so that we could, we can take care of cases in a virtual capacity. So that has grown significantly to the point that on some dockets, we can do them virtual. People don't have to show up. We're going to expand. I predict that in the next 10 years, that'll be one of our daily dockets that people are going to have to show up in court. They'll be able to take care of everything virtually, which is going to save them a lot of time. We too have been impacted by not only the COVID, not only the pandemic, we too have been impacted by people leaving. And so we've got personnel issues that the administration is aware of and is addressing. But we are bringing in new people to handle those things. But to that end, we have seen a plethora of new cases come throughout the pandemic. Police Department has really been doing a wonderful job in terms of policing. About all the issues they've had, they've never stopped doing their job. And I want to celebrate them for that. To that end, work has to go somewhere. And so you saw us last summer with some specific days that we went to Bowwell trying to clear some of those dockets. And we did approximately 26,000 cases when we were at, at Bowwell last summer, clearing some of those backlog of cases. We think that helped the citizens. We won't do that again because it takes so much manpower from us to go to Bowwell, set up five stations there. We simply believe that if we push forward with our dockets in our current location, we'll get there. We are ramping back up to handle regular dockets. We've been open. We've been open and people have been coming. But just like every other entity in our community, as soon as we start pushing, we get, we get hit by another wave. Let me tell you how the wave hits us. We are in such cramped quarters at the court that it tends to affect not just the citizens who come, but our employees. If you get our employees sick, then we can't have dockets. Not just our employees, but the law department has prosecutors over there. Police Department has security over there. And so we are mindful. We have defense counsel who are there every day. So we have to be mindful of all these entities. And over the course of the pandemic, each one of those entities has been hit by some wave of COVID. And we've had to kind of slow down a little bit. We know the pressure that comes in every sector, from police department on the council, the people wanting things done. We think we're in a safer place now. The mayor and his administration are keenly aware of the issues we have. They consider us part of the public safety cohort. And so the attention that's being paid to police, fire, 911, 311, municipal court is a part of that conversation every time. You will see us, particularly with these new judges, particularly with the full contingency of judges going full stand ahead, you will see us handling dockets on a very rapid basis, getting people moved down the line. But also with this stop and go venture, you'll also see us being a little more emphatic about people handling their responsibilities at the court. We give a lot on our requirements. We probably give more community service than any other court anywhere. To that end, we're going to be requiring that people do community service. We're going to be requiring that people pay the way they're supposed to pay. Only in Birmingham, the people come in, come in without an expectation that they got to handle their business that day. They go to other jurisdictions and know before you leave, you need to see the cashier or somebody before you leave. Birmingham, we are more compassionate than that. We understand that we've got a 30% population poverty issue here. But that's 30%, not 70%. Everybody's not unable to pay. Everybody's not able to do. And so we're going to make sure with all of our resources, we're going to be a little bit more emphatic about people doing it. I can tell you right now, Birmingham Municipal Court won't be an issue when it comes to not treating people fairly. But I also want to urge the citizens to treat Birmingham Municipal Court fair when you come in as well, because we've got a responsibility. Two, it can't always be on your end that you get the benefit. You know, if you've got an obligation, come in and take care of it. And I can tell you this, most of them do. Most of our citizens come in, they take care of their responsibilities as quickly as they can. And when those people can't come in, we give them opportunities, opportunities to take care of it in a timely basis. And that's been working out real well. I think you'll see that continue and you'll start seeing those numbers come down in terms of the backlog we have. You'll get more consistent reports from us because we'll have people in place who can give you those metrics. That's one thing we've been talking about lately, I think in every sector, data, data, data. More metrics helps us be more efficient and helps us utilize our personnel better. I'm excited, Council, to tell you that you'll see excellent work coming from us as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we have another counselor, Counselor Woods and then Counsel Pro Tem with everybody. Let's go ahead. Okay, Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really wanted to say real quick, man, I just appreciate the way you go about your business and the way you lead that, that area over there. I know if I've ever had some questions or had to reach out, you've been, you know, board and willing to kind of open, let us know and shine some light on what is going on and how we can help. But really just wanted to say, you know, just got appreciation for the way you carry it and the way you do your business.
Thank you so much, Council.
Counsel. Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Judge Sparks, it's an honor. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to bring greetings at the specialty court graduation and having the opportunity to have a lengthy conversation with you. And we realized that we got a great connection. And so thank you for doing the great work, you know, over at the court and your team. So I look forward to working with you and, you know, the court system to, as you say, people got to be accountable, but we also believe in giving people second chances.
Yes, ma'am. I think we probably are in the same place in terms of how we move forward on some things. So we look forward to working.
Thank you. Counsel Pro Tem.
I, I definitely have to give you kudos, Judge Sparks and municipal court. So my father and I actually practiced in other municipalities. I can't in the city of Birmingham. So, and I see the way you all treat people when you're out there, the way you conduct the court. And it's amazing, Councils, the way they do. I've been in municipalities where it's disorganized, the people don't know what's going on. I mean, it's just chaos. And I really appreciate everything that you all do. My mom being a judge, I know how hard it is for you guys during the pandemic to be backlogged, that you guys risked your own health to have trials and everything else. So I just really want to thank you. It, it really means a lot to feel safe in knowing that our vote, that we're voting for judges that are really making sure the scales of justice are balanced, because that's the most important thing. We've seen cases all over the country where judges use their own personal vendettas to give back at people just because maybe they're Republican or a Democratic or maybe they're want to be maybe too tough on crime. And I just want to really, really just say thank you for all that you do. And also they have done a great job in environmental court. You know this Judge Sparks. So there was actually a man in Weston Manor, on my side, Madam President, that was like a hoarder and Mayor Woodson knows exactly. We, we wrote about that at the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, it's horrible, y'all. He has stuff all over his yard. And so we asked municipal court what was going on. And they said, well, he wasn't served properly. And that was after talking to neighbors. And then eventually we were able to get that case resolved in municipal court. So that's another way that I say that we can rely on them to help with illegal dumping and to make sure our neighbors live in the neighborhood that they're proud of. So thank you so much for your help.
Thank you.
Long before you were born, your father and I, during three of the worst days of our life, we sat next to each other as we took the Alabama bar and never spoke or introduced ourselves to one another until the third day of the bar exam. So that's how we met one another.
Wonderful. Counselor Moore.
Yeah, so I just wanted to just tell you thank you. I work for Volunteer Lawyers Birmingham and I cannot tell you how many times I've had, you know, attorneys to be in awe of the times that, you know, they've had an opportunity to work with you during, you know, Project Homeless Connect or, you know, even clients coming up to me after the fact and saying, man, you know, he's a judge that truly cares. And it's not about, you know, punishment. It's about, you know, me getting on my feet and me really, you know, being in a better position to move forward in life. And, you know, they, they would talk about the creativity that you would use in some of the sentencing and, and things that you would require them to do that wasn't necessarily, you know, things that were hard. It was just like, he really wants to see me win. And so just wanted to tell you thank you for that. I haven't had an opportunity to come over there to municipal court. But I know that you all are doing great things and looking forward to seeing what else you all do.
Thank you very much. Sam, what did you want to say?
Just, I just want to say thank you to all, to you for the way you conduct the court and yourself. And to all the judges, because I know that's a hard job. I mean, the people in the neighborhood want you to get that guy and put him in jail and leave him there for six years. And then the guy or girl has issues. And you take those issues into consideration, but you still remember that the people in the neighborhood are sick of this person and their behavior. And you're going to try to help change their behavior so that, you know, all their neighbors don't hate them anymore. So thank you.
I can say this, I know today, there's emphasis on the judges because of the vote that was taken. Truly couldn't do anything without the staff at the court. And we have, we have a staff that's committed to helping individuals. They do a great job day in and day out. And they're in a thankless place a lot of time because people don't even know what they do. But I want to celebrate them today as well because they help. Really, we tell them all the time, they help make us look good about what they do. So the Birmingham Municipal Court staff is, is, is an excellent staff and they deserve a lot of recognition today.
Thank you. And we have one final counselor, Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Judge, I just wanted to commend you on how I have observed you run Birmingham Municipal Court over the past five years as I've been sitting on this dais. From speaking at your specialty courts and, and seeing the, the, uh, the amount of hope and the amount of change that was on the graduates' faces and their families' faces as well was pretty, was pretty humbling. You know, I think it was, one person came up to me and said, you know, this is the first thing I've ever graduated. And, and it was because of something that they did in error. And you were able to see, and your staff and your judges were able to see that instead of spending however many days in the city jail, maybe a second chance and a path, you know, down a different road would be more appropriate. This person had children with them. And so it's, I think the work that you guys are doing literally is changing lives. I know that's a tagline and people say it all the time, but it literally is. And so I'm, I've been continually impressed at y'all's operation. You now have a new part-time judge that's worked as a public defender in drug court for Judge Shante Owens. And I think that, I think that that's going to continue the path down, looking at ways that, that a second chance is more appropriate than throwing the book at somebody. So thank you all collectively for the work that y'all do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilors, we still have three items, I believe, that are before us that are on our addendum agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you just call our next items?
Item 29. In order to further amend the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 by appropriating $11,630,975 for a 5% cost of living adjustment, $700,000 to human resources for workers' compensation, $80,000 to human resources for medical exams, $1,200,000 to equipment management for gas, diesel and parts, $3 million to World Games, 2022, $275,000 to the city council for council chambers renovations, $500,000 to information management systems for cybersecurity, $800,000 to Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service for retention and recruitment, $10 million to Department of Transportation for street paving, $7 million to Department of Public Works for the uniformed trash bins, $3,745,000 to Department of Public Works for rolling stock and $600,000 to Department of Transportation for rolling stock.
All right, thank you very much. I do want to make the public aware that this item is recommended by the mayor, did get approval yesterday by the committee of the whole. Mayor Woodson, would you just give us the opportunity to just tell us what's before us?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President, to the entire council. Thank you for that robust committee of the whole meeting, special call meeting, committee meeting of the whole, y'all know what I'm trying to say. But just to break this down, Madam President and Council, I think I said before this chambers last week and we spoke to on the ways to take care of our employees, especially our public safety employees. And so this first thing you see is a 5% COLA, known as cost of, cost of living adjustment, known as a COLA, at 5%. At 5% for all of our employees, that's a price tag of 11.6 million plus dollars. I think as we continue on, you see that workers' compensation, although historically claims, claims are down, we've had a significant amount of public safety employees significantly injured on the job, including those shot in the line of duty and survived. And so while they were performing their duty, some of the things that we've been billed from medical, et cetera, has been higher. And so within this fiscal year, we won't be able to continue to give out claims until June 30th. So these are additional resources needed for that. The same can be said for our medical exams as we continue to be aggressive in our recruiting efforts. These exams are needed to make sure our employees are aligned with our human resources rules. Nick Sellers presented before you not just today, but in more detail at a former committee of the whole meeting on some of the needs dealing with the World Games. And this was a number they brought to us and we brought before you. Continuing on, I think everyone knows, especially you, Nod and your staff, that these chambers can use a little love. I can stop there. In addition to that, in wake of the, the war that's been, that's happening currently in Ukraine, solving for not just ransoms that have been increasing across municipalities, across our nation, but solving for all type of security, possible security breaches. We think this is definitely needed. This was something that our IMS director, Patrick McClendon, told us could not wait to July 1. And so these are definitely would be considered unnecessary to protect ourselves as well as the services we provide online and all informations that are online. as well as the services we provide online and all informations that are online. And then we get down externally to, um, oh, one more thing internally, or two more things internally, actually. Um, one being, um, our, our fire department continues to be aggressive, um, especially in lieu of this historical class they graduated yesterday. Um, but we continue to, to want to set ourselves apart and offer um, an incentive package for those that we aggressively go out to recruit and actually say yes and want to become a part of our Birmingham Fire Rescue Service team and family. So that is what that um, monies are for, retention and recruitment. And then we go externally. I think we all know that um, there are two things that we want to solve for in this community. Um, one is, is our basic infrastructures, which is our streets. Uh, we're fortunate um, to have this surplus. Um, we want to put ten million dollars towards street paving. In addition to that, related to finding more unique ways to not only strike the balance of keeping our city cleaner, but also protecting our employees from a health standpoint and safety standpoint where they don't hurt themselves. Um, we want to take the pilot U-Haul program of uniformed trash bins and extend that to um, homes across the entire city at a price tag of seven million dollars. And we're making that, that purchase on behalf of our citizens. And then we need equipment and our vehicles to actually pick up those uniformed trash bins. And so you see the Department of um, Public Works as well as the Department of Transportation for additional rolling stock, which is vehicles. Um, just a bigger picture, um, the audit was presented yesterday to this council, um, from our quote COVID budget, and you all made some pretty tough and hard decisions. Um, and we're glad to be on the other side of this. We're glad from this audit, there's an actual surplus. Uh, we're not spending all the surplus funds, but we're spending a significant amount that we believe says thank you to our employees, one. Two, gives them, gives them the equipment they need. Um, three, externally provides better services for our citizens from an infrastructure standpoint as well as a better way for them to engage their refuge as well as for us to identify those who maybe not or necessarily want to be clean. That's a high level, Madam President. I'll give it back to you for any questions your, your colleagues may have.
Thank you very much, Mayor Woodson. I know, uh, has already been stated, we did have a lengthy meeting yesterday, uh, going through the items. We had thanked you for presenting to us the audit and the results of that with this surplus that we have and um, the decision to put this money, uh, putting people first as well as putting our neighborhoods first. And so we are grateful, uh, that we have this opportunity to do this. Counselors, are there any questions? Ms. Clark?
Mayor, uh, thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I know we talked a little bit yesterday about um, how the trash bins might be, you know, distributed by route. Are there any just projections about when we might, you know, when it, how, you know, what the timeline might be for that?
So the first thing we have to do, um, if you all decide to approve this today, um, it goes back to the team between the Department of Public Works as well as the finance team to make the purchase. Um, we don't even know at how long that will be before we can get them based on-
Because of the supply chain.
Everything that's going on across the entire globe in the supply chain right now.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think in the meantime, what we do, um, while that timeline is not known as far as when we will actually receive them because of supply chain issues, um, that we start internally creating the actual communication and education um, plan around how we engage our citizens. Um, the U-Haul program was successful because of what we did before the citizens actually received them. We will take that on those small routes, that same plan and amplify that and grow that plan because it'll be citywide. Um, it's probably not prudent to try to give every route, which would be all the majority of the households for the entire city at once. Uh, we'll phase this in and make sure it works um, for all the routes in all the city council districts.
Okay.
Um, I think your colleague, uh, Counselor Woods mentioned, and he was just throwing this out, will this take six to, once to one year? The truth is, any number I give you is, it will be made up, right? Because we don't know. I think what we would do is push to make sure we get this to all of our citizens. Solving for what we can control by the time those bins get here, uh, we will have a strategy to deploy them as well as to over communicate and educate um, the community and citizens that will receive them. In addition to that, Madam PIC, I think, um, when the, when these laws are finally complete on how we are reimagining how we engage refuge, I think that's part of our communication and education plan as well.
Yeah, well, I, I just want to speak on behalf of the uh, leaders of District Eight in thanking you for this initiative. I, I believe they were thinking of ways they could do it themselves. And so I said, just hold on. I think um, through PIC and the mayor, there's something coming. So I know they're going to welcome it and I think the education piece is huge. And in the uh, Public Housing Annual Plan Public Hearing, they were talking about uh, more education for Section Eight voucher holders and landlords. And I think that's another uh, avenue for us on education, just to get landlords who rent, you know, rent properties to be a little more in tune with the city code as it relates to refuse collection and to, you know, pass that, some requirements on to their tenants, um, some compliance. And, and those might be families that tend to move around more. So I think multi-channel-
Yeah, absolutely.
-ways to get people at least the basic knowledge, uh, is going to be, going to bode well for us.
Absolutely. And Madam President, to Counselor Clark's point, she mentioned her neighborhood officers, just to you, to all nine of you, as well as all your neighborhood officers, but then your individual districts and collectively all ninety-nine neighborhood leaders. And y'all, this has been a very like, serious conversation that people are excited about, especially these neighborhood leaders. This, this is a fundamental game changer. Um, I know, you know, garbage cans aren't sexy, right? But our ability to just, it touches on so many things that we think is going to have a very positive ripple for everybody internally, for our employees, from a safety and health standpoint. Um, but externally, our ability to offer an additional tool within our toolbox of how to address um, cleaning up our city and making it cleaner. So we're excited about it.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Protam, yes ma'am.
Um, well, first I have to thank the PIC Committee and Chief Mitchell, who wasn't the chief at the time, because when they came to us with this idea, maybe two, two and a half years ago, they said, have faith in us, uh, we'll figure this out. And actually, uh, Chief Moore, they said, have faith in us, we'll figure it out, we'll help resolve it. And so, um, I want to thank Counselor Williams and former Counselor William Parker because um, we really, really pushed for this, you all. And I think Chief Mitchell, do we have an ordinance for the landlords? Was that one of our ordinances? So we actually do have an ordinance that will come before the full council, helping with landlords as well. Um, in the PIC, we had a brief work session on education, everything. But I just asked, if you could just please include us when you guys did that communication plan? Uh, my other A colleagues are very, very intelligent. And I'm not just saying that, and they all have very different types of uh, constituents where maybe they can give you a different perspective. Like on the west side, we have slightly older constituents. So we may tell you, hey, we may need more paper compared to maybe other districts. Or even Counselor Woods, things he's seen out with the kids, he can say, well, I think these group of kids will be good, uh, to put their faces on there and help them canvass. So I just want to make sure that when we do this, I said this before, that all ten of us are included, that this is something all ten of us embrace, um, as well. And counselors, I will have to throw this out here, we don't have to do talking trash again, but that was the aim, to have some type of initiative like that for our education piece. So if you guys will just reconsider it at a different day, like I said, we have to use Be Liter Free, I think that'll be good. We also can have like, a smaller scale version where we do things within the schools in our neighborhoods. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Protam. Any other counselors? Yes ma'am, Ms. Abbott?
I know this is getting in the weeds, but I would like for these new containers that the city purchases to be clearly marked that they belong to the city of Birmingham. Because I, I see containers from other cities over in our city and our containers in other people's cities. And I just want them to be clearly marked so there's no confusion as to who they, what city they belong in and who they belong to.
So Madam President, to our Dean of the Council here.
Dean.
Yes ma'am, we will honor that. They will be tagged, um, but they'll be- Yeah, they'll be geotagged as well.
And that means that people can't steal them? So they have a look-
Or we can, or we can find them.
Yeah, we can find them basically. So they, they don't, well, I mean, you know, stealing getaway with this. So they'll be able to track where the trash can is.
Thank you.
Find my phone and you go around looking through your trash cans.
Counselor Quinn.
Um, yeah, we love to talk trash around here, right? So I just want to plant a seed. So in most cases, um, when municipalities do this, they have the opportunity to um, brand the receptacles. Um, and I just want to throw this out there that we can do more uh, than, than just message about trash on those receptacles. Um, specifically, this is an idea that I saw presented at a NUSA meeting years ago. People putting uh, the speed limit on the side of the trash can. Um, so, you know, once a week, everybody who passes by, you know, the entire neighborhood is reminded the speed limit is whatever it is. So, and, and in the city of Birmingham, the speed limit is pretty much twenty-five miles per hour in every neighborhood. So just wanted to, to plant that seed that there's, you know, these are like little mini billboards. Um, so if we have the opportunity to do some things like that creatively, I think we should definitely uh, take it into consideration.
Definitely talk with um, Chief of Ops over here as well as Josh Yates to see how feasible that is.
Thank you. Counselors, I do, um, just want to remind you, as we've talked about the surplus as a result of the COVID budget. I know there were six of us that sat through, uh, those budgets, uh, had to consider that budget and it was not an easy time for us. We had to make decisions that affected a lot of people in the city of Birmingham, affected the resources here in the city of Birmingham. And so this is a result of those decisions that we made. And so I'm happy at this time, uh, that once we pass this, we will give back to our employees who really worked tirelessly and um, served the city and served us as residents. So whether you were picking up trash, you were out there public safety, or if you were just the person that was in here answering the phone, or um, being sure that our business in asphalt, that is the asphalt man. And uh, so we are, this is an opportunity for us to really, we want to honor the work that had been done. Just bring some type of orientation, if that possible, and we work with the administration to do it?
Yes ma'am, it's, it's already in play.
All right.
We will, would be very sure to take care.
A-one Agricultural District Shelby County to C-two General Commercial District City of Birmingham filed by Allington Properties. Our applicant representing the owner Hannah Family Partnership LTD Omar Green Touchstone, William Andrew Newt, Anna Newton Kirby, and Catherine Quinn for property located forty-six forty-one Highway two eighty, situated in the southwest quarter, section thirty-six, township eighteen South Range two West Birmingham.
We have a motion for this item, we're setting a public hearing. Are any questions or discussions about setting this hearing date? We'll take the vote. Thank you.
All right. Counselor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that everybody?
All right.
All right. Thank you, that motion passes. And so we've set that public hearing for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Next item, please.
Item thirty-one, a resolution approving a five percent cost of living allowance for all applicable employees that may be eligible to receive a merit step increase or other merit increase basis date that occurs subsequent to, subsequent to April sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, provided that the employee meets the requirement of personal board of justice county rules and regulations, including, but not limited to, rules eight and fourteen.
I love approval. Same. All right. It's been moved and properly second. Any questions regarding this item? And I believe this is a requirement that we have to make to, in order to um, pass that information on to the county, correct? Any questions? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Counselor.
All right, thank you, counselors, that item passes. Any other items, Mr. Clerk? Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Set to end. All right, counselors, at this time, we will entertain any comments that you may have regarding your district. So please let us know. Uh, we'll start with you, Counselor Woods.
Uh, yeah, just one thing I wanted to say right fast. Uh, if you remember- Thank you, thank you. Um, if you remember the gentleman that came with Drink Fresh, uh, he came and spoke maybe a month ago. They have their uh, grand opening on tomorrow at ten AM. They're over on uh, uh, Eleventh Avenue South, right next to Jim and Nick's over on the south side. So um, did get to check them out this weekend at the soft opening, got a really good setup. So definitely encourage everybody to go over there and get some healthy options. Also, uh, we'll be out on Saturday, kind of prepping uh, our community garden for the spring season. Had a good year last year. Uh, everything went really, really well except for uh, people took the watermelons before we could get them to their full potential. And so, uh, we don't know how, how big they could have gotten, but uh, we'll be out prepping, getting things planted uh, this weekend. So definitely invite you out to East Pennsyl Valley Rec Center at nine thirty AM. So looking forward to that. And that, that ends my comments for the-
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Centrepat will meet on April the fourth virtual at six PM at the Howard Sanford Community Center on Avenue D in Prey City. And conference call, and their dialing information is seven two oh, seven four oh nine seven three two. The access code is three four eight 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 oh eight. The next public safety meeting will be Tuesday, April the twelfth at one PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCrano later than Thursday, April the seventh at one PM. Uh, your very own Counselor Latonya Tate will be nominated to receive a Community Affairs Committee Women's History Month Appreciation Award on this Wednesday. And the event will take place at St. Paul United Methodist Church at twelve PM located at fifteen hundred Sixth Avenue North. Um, also, the ninth district of the AME Church under the leadership of Bishop Harry L. Seawright and Supervisor Sharita Moon Seawright will hold its annual mid-convocation March the thirty-first through April the second at fifteen hundred Daniel Payne Drive in Birmingham, Alabama. They will also be partnering with um, myself and Alabama Region Medical Services to provide COVID home testing kits, um, to clarity- home testing kits to clarity attending the meeting. And so also, they want me to also bring readings as well at 7:00 p.m. for their opening. That's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to thank the administration for honoring Mabel Perry from the District Two office as part of y'all's Women's History Month, strong her campaign. If, I know everybody up here knows Mabel, but she is a two-time survivor of cancer and has taken that life circumstance. And instead of, you know, feeling sorry for herself, has turned it into a huge asset in her life and in the way that she's able to mentor and inspire other, especially other women. And so I want to thank y'all for honoring her. It means a lot to me, but I'm sure it means a lot to the Perry family as well, because she is somebody that is very special to not just all of District Two, but Birmingham as well. And so that's the only personal thing I have to say right now.
Well, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Clark? And happy birthday.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. So I really appreciate the rezoning vote today. I know that, you know, anytime you approve a commercial zone in the middle of a neighborhood, it's considered spot zoning, but we had a long list of conditions, so it can't become a gas station. I do appreciate it. And, you know, I just want to thank all the partners we've had along the way and hope to have in the future, you know, starting with the city, because that Love Your Block grant was a game changer. It got us going. And then we had a city planner assist us with our neighborhood plan. Then when Birmingham Strong came along during the pandemic and sent us, you know, paid most of the salary for us to have some dedicated staff at that garden, because, you know, it made us realize we couldn't get there with just volunteers. So it was a game changer. And so the city has been there, you know, all along the way at these different points. And more recently, the ground lease of the Hong Kong Seafood Block so that we can have a distribution place to sell fresh vegetables is gonna be a game changer for that corner that's very blighted. And the UAB, I'm sorry, the Birmingham Southern School of Management is helping us with a business plan. And so it's just been a really great source of collaboration and ways for partners to engage with our community. And we hope that others can be inspired by it because there's a lot of help out there, you know, to help us get projects done. So thank you again. And the Birmingham Park and Recreation Department invites preschool and senior groups to McLendon Park Soccer Field. That's Legion Field. We don't call it McLendon Park that much, but that's what it is. That's going to be on Thursday, April 14th. It's called Bridging the Gap. It's an Easter egg hunt and it's gonna be, there's gonna be giveaways and refreshments and more. It's all free. It starts at 10:00 a.m. and goes till 12:30. And for more information or to register your group to attend, you can call Lisa at 205-919-2686. And also note that the UAB Live Health Smart Alabama will have its first annual Spring Into Wellness Fair. That's also going to be at Legion Field, rain or shine. It's going to be on April 2nd from 11:00 to 3:00. And it's a health fair that's free and a free event that's open to everyone. And the goal of the fair is to increase health awareness by providing health screenings, activities, materials, demonstrations, and educational information that will motivate citizens to make positive health behavior changes. Another fun event coming up, also on Saturday, April 7th, I mean, 2nd, sorry, Saturday, April 2nd, is something called Poetry in the Park 2022. It's at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens from 2:00 to 4:00. You can join the Friends of Birmingham Botanical Gardens and Magic City Poetry Festival for a leisurely guided walking tour through the gardens while you enjoy the works of four Alabama poets. Visitors are encouraged to join the fun as they encounter brief poetry readings between short strolls that are five to 10 minutes long. The poets include Salam Green, Haley Cotton, Matt Lynn, and the 2022 Magic City Poetry Festival Eco Poetry Fellow, Nobila Lovelace. Nobila serves as the Earth Poet. She will be partnered with the National Park Service and the National Civil Rights Monument. No registration is required. It's free and open to the public. And back to our cleaning up. It's time for our next monthly cleanup is almost here. It's going to be in my neighborhood, Bush Hills. We're going to meet at Alma Dennis Park on Saturday, April 9th, to help beautify our neighborhood. The registration starts at 8:30 with the cleanup going from 9:00 to 11:00. I also want to note that while there are no neighborhood association meetings this week, the next Park Rec Cultural Arts Committee of the council will have a work session next Monday. That's April 4th at 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. We're going to get an update on the Revision Lynn Park Initiative and also Jefferson County Memorial Project will give us an update. As always, I'd like to thank the Public Information Office for coming out to document our cleanup efforts and just anything the council does. They really, really do an outstanding job. So we'd like to show the video of our cleanup last week in Thomas, and that'll conclude my report. Well, Thomas Neighborhood is one of my favorite hidden away places. It's kind of tucked away between US Highway 78, behind the Westgate Shopping Center, and Pratt City Avenue Dome. So unless you're really trying to be in Thomas, you might not know it's back here. So it's adjacent to.
What's going on with that?
We are having some technical difficulties.
Y'all can watch it online.
We'll let them play it after the end of the program, unless Kim, is it ready? Or that's just, okay. We'll go ahead and then just wait for it on the next go around. Thank you. All right, Councilor Moore. But thank you, Councilor Clark.
Yes, I'll be brief. There are no neighborhood association meetings this week. Did get an opportunity to go and celebrate Mr. Rufus Smith, 90th birthday. It was a beautiful celebration. Had a lot of friends, a lot of family, good food, macaroni cheese, all the good stuff. So it was a, it was a great turnout. And then lastly, I just want to encourage everybody to go and check out your library, your local library. They have a lot of cool events going on all the time, but especially this week, you know, different scavenger hunts. I think this week is actually Harry Potter Week. And so, and they have several robotics classes that you can participate in. So if you would like to learn more information, go to bplonline.org to learn more information about your public library.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Dr. Quinn?
I don't have any announcements other than just which I'm sure you're, we're planning to do anyway, to remind folks about the public hearing tonight at 5:30 at the Crossplex. It's an opportunity for you to give comment on the proposed redistricting plan. And if you are not able to, to make it tonight, strongly encourage you to go to the city council's website and check out the redistricting page. Please know that you have to scroll all the way to the bottom of the page in order to leave your comments. I had an individual ask me about that last night. Just keep scrolling down and there's a section there for you to put your comments. And other than that, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem.
Thank you, Madam President. The next budget and finance meeting will be April 11th at 3:30 p.m. here in the chambers. Submissions are due April 6th by noon to Laquita Wilson and AJ Gray. The next PIC committee meeting will meet this Tuesday, April 5th, well, next Tuesday, April 5th at 2:00 p.m. here. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Email submissions to Laquita Wilson and AJ Gray. Oakwood Place Neighborhood will meet at Harrison Park Recreation Center next Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. Mason City Neighborhood Association will meet next Tuesday via teleconference. The call-in number is 712-770-8017, and the code is 843426. The North Tinsville Neighborhood will meet at Memorial Park Recreation Center next Wednesday, April 6th at 5:00 p.m. The Woodland Park Neighborhood had their cleanup this past Saturday. It was great. We had family and friends that come out. We picked up a lot of the trash just off of Green Springs by Dennison. I will, nevermind, I'll ask this later from Mayor's office, because we still need to clean up the rest of the trash just off of Green Springs, like closer to where the neighborhood sign is. I don't know if, and we can clean it out. We just need somebody to make sure we don't get hit. The Shaolin Memorial Gardens does maintenance for the grounds every Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00. Come out and help maintain the grounds. Okay, at 1600 12th Street Southwest, 35211. Also, I stopped by the USFL Youth Clinics, Youth Skills Clinic this past Saturday. They did a great job, colleagues. There were so many kids. My little nephew did the Sunday event. They enjoyed themselves. They did Little Chance. I think Kim has that on the video, hyping them up before the camp. And there's actually two little girls that were there, so I thought that was cute. And also there's a community garden event this past Saturday off of 15th Place Southwest. The office will be continuing our cleanliness campaign. We have three cleanups coming up next month, and I'll talk about those next week. Piggybacking off of what Council Moore said, the Tinsville Library has a lot of events this week. Today, they'll have a Young Great Dreams Entrepreneurship Fair this evening from 2:00 to 5:00. Tomorrow, at 3:00, there will be a youth fashion event. And then on Thursday at 3:00 p.m., they will host the Celebration of Black Excellence and Literacy, Unity Black Party and Step Show. And then Friday, from 12:00 to 3:00, they will host a spring break movie madness, which I think is very, very cool. And then, Council Clark, I will be there, making sure I go to the Spring Into Wellness Fair at Legion Field to support them. And I'll play my videos after counseling, so we can go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just some final announcements from District Seven. We do have a neighborhood meeting this week. Jones Valley Neighborhood will meet Friday, April 1st at 6:00 p.m. in person at the Powley Library. I'm going to go back and check that time. Normally, they meet around 4:00. But we do meet Friday, April 1st at the Powley Library. I went last month and we weren't meeting, so I had to sit in the car and call in. So I'll be sure to pay attention next time. The Grisella Heights Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, April 4th at 3:00 p.m. and will be meeting in person at the Mary Door Center. And then the Powley Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, April 4th at 4:00 p.m. via Zoom. And did you call out that number as well? 831-POWLEY, 831-6889-0244. The code is V6XPP6. As already been mentioned, we do want to encourage all residents to come out this evening at 5:30 at the Birmingham Crossplex. We will have an opportunity or give you this opportunity. We want your feedback and your input regarding the draft map that we are presenting. And so we encourage your feedback. If you cannot attend, please know that those maps are available on our website. They've been there for some time. As Dr. Quinn mentioned, there is an, if you scroll all the way down, there is a comment section where you can email us your question. So if you're not there in person tonight and you'd like to send that information, please go ahead and email that to us so that we can look at your comment. And if we need to get additional information to support your comment, we'll do that. But that's this evening. Councilors, I look forward to each of you being there and being present with us, with the redistricting committee as well as with our citizens. I also, I just want to take this time, when we started out together in August, and then some of you had to go through another series of elections, but when we all took our oath in October, I want to continue to thank each counselor for the work that you do, not only for your districts, but for the work that, and the way we work together as a team. I know that one of the teams for dysfunctional teams is that you're afraid of conflict or you are afraid to disagree. And so I appreciate these team members for your ability to, we find ourselves sometimes at a juncture with what we respect each other for differences. And we come together eventually for what we feel is the good for our residents in our neighborhoods. So I thank you. I continue to thank you. And at this time, then, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. We adjourn. Thank you, Councilor.
Well, Thomas Neighborhood is one of my favorite hidden away places. It's kind of tucked away between US Highway 78, behind the Westgate Shopping Center, and Pratt City Avenue W. So unless you're really trying to be in Thomas, you might not know it's back here. So it's adjacent to the Wade Sand and Gravel Facility, which is sort of the giant in the Thomas Neighborhood, and a longstanding partner. And they've sponsored breakfast for us here today. And we're just excited to lend them a hand.
Well, we're doing a community cleanup right here in our community of Thomas. And this is necessary because I'm a firm believer that you feel better when you look better. So what we're attempting to do is just do some polishing and cleaning up in our community to try to instill a better sense of pride in the neighborhood.
When you first enter to any neighborhood, you want it to look presentable. You don't want to have people driving into your neighborhood and see beer cans, wine bottle, whiskey bottle, needles when they first come in. When you first come in, it sets a person's attitude to a whole kind of neighborhood that you live in.
And so the neighborhood, you know, the interior streets are pretty well maintained, but the access roads are really horribly trashed. So we plan to really get at it.
It also prevents that trash from entering our waterways. If we can stop it before it gets there in the first place, that makes a huge difference because it never gets downstream. Animals don't ingest it. By extension, we don't either. And that's the, that's the biggest benefit of all, is just preventing further damage from occurring to the ecosystem.
But I would bet you a dollar to a doughnut, we can go out here and clean up Florida Avenue. Before we get to one end of Florida Avenue back down, somebody will be tossing trash out. So sometimes it feels like you just bring your head against a rock.
Need to get involved. Get in, keep your neighborhood clean. Because that's what made me as a little boy come up. I used to see the vacant lot with tires and stuff, and it made me feel bad because it was like a dumping ground. And I got out and got about my own community. That was back, I mean, I was 30, about 40 years ago.
Normally, groups have like a specific organization that they work with every year, but I'm with Alpha Omicron Pi, and we didn't really have a specific one that we wanted to work with. We're like, had a specific one that we worked with every year. So we just said, hey, like, sign us up for whatever, but we're down to serve anyone.
Be litter free District Eight. So we're moving around to all of the neighborhoods in District Eight in series next month. In April, we'll be in Bush Hills, which is the traditional time of their annual cleanup. Really preparing for the World Games, getting District Eight ready to host the world.